Counsel, if you will come to order. It is 7:00 PM on June the 4th, and we do have all members of council present and have a quorum. In just a moment, I'm going to ask everyone to stand. You'll be led in an opening prayer by myself, and then remain standing for pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag following that. Would you please stand? Gracious God, we are indeed thankful for the manifold blessings that you pour out upon us, for the wonderful town that we live in, for the blessings of prosperity, the blessings of health, and the blessings of family and friends. We ask that you would lead our deliberation this evening with your wisdom, that we might take our task seriously, looking at making the best decisions for the town and the people of Trophy Club. We thank you for the protection that you provided for the residents who suffered the fire losses over the weekend, and for the protection that you provided our emergency responders in those situations. Would you bless them as they try to recover from their loss? And we thank you for the generosity of the many residents of Trophy Club who have reached out to offer a helping hand. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the council on any matter whether an audit is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, do we have anybody to sign up to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right, no one. Item number one, announcements and reports. Assistant Town Manager, Chief Financial Officer Glickman's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding same. Toddler Playground, Golf Cart Parking, 2016 Fire Camp, and Town Hall Construction. Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to mention the string of fires that we did have over the weekend on Sunday as a result of a series of lightning strikes, and we're happy to report there were no injuries to staff members or residents, and then we're very proud of our first responders and all the mutual aid that assisted them with that, you know, tragic series of events on Sunday night. The toddler playground, we're completing the order this week. The project will be under budget by about $120, so we got right up there to the intended amount. And delivery and installation will be completed in about six to eight weeks. Golf cart parking, staff members met with council members Reed and Schaffner regarding the applicable areas within the park system to target for the golf cart parking, excuse me. And we also reviewed the park ordinance for changes that would need to occur to allow the golf carts, and we would anticipate bringing the ordinance change back at least by the July 12 meeting. And then the Fire Academy, or 2016 Fire Camp is June 27th to July 1st from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and that is at the Tarrant County Community College, and there's various things. It's a five-day course. People get to learn and experience apparatus and equipment, extinguishers, the gear that they wear, earn a CPR certificate, and do different extraction-type deals, and tour a air medical helicopter. And in regards to the town hall construction, staff has been working with the MUD on this for quite some time, and we're currently working on various issues, one being the relocation of their water line to the northern and eastern border of the property. This line currently cuts diagonally across the property. Approximately 200 feet of the water line is outside of their easement, and this project really needs to start with that process, because we can't really start dirt work. We can't build the large retaining wall in the back before that first piece really gets completed. We anticipate a non-standard agreement for water and wastewater service to be on the, to be before the MUD board on their June 21st agenda, and we're currently conducting a sewer study at the request of the MUD. The cost of that study is $6,000. And the fire suppression engineer that is working for our contractor on the project concluded that an eight-inch water line is more than adequate to provide suppression for the facility. And then July 2nd is the date that we really need to hit and get our construction going, or we will have some contracts expire and they will need to be rebid, which would end up costing us more, so.
So the, did y'all come to agreement about who moves the water line, or is that up for MUD discussion at their meeting?
Well, I think that could be up for discussion.
Do you want to answer that, Pat?
That hasn't come up. We're planning on doing the movement ourselves and then charging them for the part that, well, if we move it, we're going to, we'll pay for it. If we upsize it, which the last email we got, they said that we don't have to upsize it now, but we'll pay for moving it. And our contractor, it's in their contract to do that.
Okay. Anybody else have questions about the report? Greg?
Are we getting any pushback or any other problems from MUD staff at this point that we should know about?
I mean, I wouldn't say there's any problems. I mean, I think they want to do what's right for their organization. We want to as well. And we have been working on this since January, so, you know, we'd like to see it, you know, see contracts not expire because of a lack of progress, you know, over the course of six months, so.
So if they were to not approve it on the 21st, how long of a delay would that be? And any costs, have we calculated that yet at all?
Well, we don't know. I mean, if contracts expire and they go to be rebid, then, you know, we have no idea what those contractors are going to, you know, come back with. I mean, it may be a completely different set of contractors, you know, the low bidder may not rebid. It could potentially be extremely, extremely costly.
All right, anybody else have questions about the report? Phillip?
Can you send us the, that fire timeline that Chief Lasky sent? I got it from a MUD director, but I think it would be good if all of us got it.
A fire timeline?
The calls as they came in.
Oh, of the houses?
Yeah, it's good information that I think y'all would appreciate.
Yeah, there was a report from the news that said we had five fires.
There were four, four calls.
Four calls, but not five fires.
What was interesting is the timeline on which call came in when and who responded. It was, kind of helps with some information that we need. Yeah, I think we definitely need that.
All right, thank you. We are now down to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed, and the consent agenda will be considered separately. We have items two through eight. Does anybody wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? All right, hearing no one seeking the floor, I'll read the items and then would entertain a motion. Item number two, consider to take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated May 10th, 2016. Item three, consider to take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated May 17, 2016. Item four, consider to take appropriate action regarding a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2015-33 authorizing participation in various cooperative purchasing programs and adopting a new resolution authorizing participation in various cooperative purchasing programs in accordance with the town's procurement policies and procedures, authorizing execution of any and all necessary agreements for participation in the cooperative programs by the mayor or his designee, and approving related contracts and the payment of related fees in accordance with the budget and providing an effective date. Item five, consider to take appropriate action regarding an interlocal agreement between the town and the city of Grapevine for the purchase of goods and services and authorizing the town manager or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Item six, consider to take appropriate action regarding amending an agreement between the town and Tarrant County for Tarrant County's participation in the Trophy Club tax increment reinvestment zone number one, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Item seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding a lease agreement between the town and Sprint Spectrum LP for a wireless antenna facility located at Track A of Lake Forest Village Phase III, a subdivision in Trophy Club, out of the WHP survey abstract number 1045, and the C. Medlin survey abstract number 823, Denton County, Texas, and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents. Item eight, consider and take appropriate action regarding financial invariance report dated April 2016. The chair would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, item two through eight.
Have a second?
I'll second.
It is moved by Councilmember Perro, seconded by Councilmember Rowe. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. The time is 12 minutes after 7:00, and we will convene into a public hearing as soon as the phone stops ringing. Consider a public hearing regarding a request to amend ordinance number 2007-15, PD Plan Development Number 27, Village Center, permitted uses in order to allow the use of the veterinarian clinic with an outdoor pet run, and a request to approve an amendment to the approved site plan on Lot 2, Block 1, Trophy Club Village Center, located at 2600 Bobcat Boulevard, Case Number PD-AMD16049. And item number 10, conduct a public hearing regarding a request to the amended ordinance number 95-20, P&amp;Z, and ordinance number 201602, P&amp;Z, Plan Development District Number 13, in order to amend certain development requirements and the approved signage plan for Meet You Anywhere Restaurant on Lot 3, the Village, located at 91 Trophy Club Drive, Case PD-AMD16048. Anyone wishing to speak on item number nine, the request for the ordinance for the Village Center permitted uses? All right, no one wishing to seek? And then item 10, a public hearing about ordinance 95-20, Plan Development Number 13, for changing some signage of Meet You Anywhere.
Looks like Susan Edstrom would like to speak regarding item number nine.
Sorry, Mr. Man.
All right, Susan Edstrom, please come forward. Pull those microphones in if you would, please.
Sure. For the shorty. Susan Edstrom, 269 Oak Hill Drive, just wanted to come to the public hearing this evening and speak in favor of the changes that are being requested. Dr. Speed is a well-respected veterinarian in the area. She's taking care of a couple of my animals as well, and I can't wait till she's here. So look forward to you guys, the approval tonight, and getting her started. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Anybody else on item nine? All right, then item 10. Anybody for item 10, Holly?
No, Mayor.
All right. No speakers for that. It is 7:15, and we will close the public hearing and convene into regular session. Item 11, recognition of Town Attorney Patricia Adam for her years of service that provided to the town of Trophy Club. I have a presentation for Patricia. Before I do that, Patricia spent 13 years that she actually worked for us, and three years or four, three years, three years when, while she worked for the legal firm that actually represented Trophy Club, and so she was the lead attorney that worked for us. So she spent a number of years when we were a much smaller town. My memory Patricia is the seemingly never-ending meetings with various lawyers about the PID. That was the most complicated, long, drawn-out thing I've ever seen in my life, and it seemed like that every time we took a step, it had to go to the AG for the AG, the Attorney General of Texas, to make a decision. Turns out, little did we know that the AG was an interpreting law as we were doing things. So it was a fairly complicated matter. We both got an education with that. I'm not sure that that was a good education, at least for me, but maybe you will find value in that in some case. We have never done another PID, although I can tell everybody that we were the first residential PID in Texas. There were commercial PIDs, but the first residential PID, and since that time, there are literally hundreds of those that are being farmed, where they're taking advantage of the fact that the developer can finance putting in the entire infrastructure in one phase, and that's a big difference of the way development has happened in the past. So Patricia, I do have a presentation for you. I'm going to come down, make you stand up. On behalf of the many councils of Trophy Club over the years that you have had to put up with, and all the citizens that you've helped, and all of the employees that you've worked with, I want to thank you very much for your time working for us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So it is a little weird that Patricia leaves and we appoint a new town attorney, and the town attorney can't be here tonight, and so we have to go back to Patricia. Patricia, will you come one more time? So it's good that we actually have some way to deal with that as we figure out what we do with that. Thank you, Patricia, for your coming tonight and for helping us. Item 12, consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2007-15, P. Plan Development Number 27, Village Center, permitted uses in order to allow the use of veterinary clinic with an outdoor pet run, and a request to approve an agreement to the, amendment to the approved site plan on Lot 2, Block 1, Trophy Club Village Center, located 2600 Bobcat Boulevard, Case PD-AMD16-049. Ron, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
I won't go into too much detail, just to note to the council that this is really two requests, and one, one is the approval of the amended site plan, the other is the amendment to the actual PD-27 regs that relate to the commercial component, which is called Village Center, and that would be adding the definition or expanding the definition of pet services, including a veterinarian, to also allow the outdoor pet run in this case. So with that, I'll just summarize the P&amp;Z approval of this item. They did approve it back on June 2nd by a 5-0 vote, subject to the following conditions: that the definition be expanded to read as follows. Approved veterinary clinics may contain an outdoor pet run, provided said area does not create a nuisance, does not contain any one pet for a period longer than 15 minutes, and is visually screened from the view of any public area, including but not limited to a parking lot. Secondly, that the main exterior door for Room 103, which on the P&amp;Z set was Page 5, be labeled, that was labeled building plan, be labeled as exit only, that way, because the door is not recessed four feet. Entryways are required to be recessed, but given the label of exit only that the P&amp;Z conditioned, it would not be considered an entryway, therefore does not need to be recessed. And then finally, connect the shrubs, submit a new landscape plan connecting the shrubs on the Phase 2 building with the Phase 1 building landscape plan. So you were sent those in an email today, and you also received hard copies today. Sorry, we didn't get that out too earlier. This was a pretty quick turnaround from the last P&amp;Z meeting. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions from the council.
All right, before we go to questions, Dennis, do you have any comments?
No, sir, I'm available for questions if somebody has them.
All right, thank you. So counsel, you have any questions of clarification of either Ron or Dennis at this point? And after that, we'll go to the applicant. Yes?
Excuse me, I don't volunteer as much as my wife and my son volunteer a lot. Is 15 minutes, is that normal, that you only allow a dog to be out in a run for 15 minutes? I know when we take dogs out, in Keller, I mean, we're out there for a half hour with two, three dogs. I mean, it makes zero sense to me that you're going to be capped at 15 minutes.
There, it's, I think it believes unattended is what it says, an unattended animal out for 15 minutes. Animals will not be unattended outside for...
But attended, they can be out there longer than 15 minutes.
With a person, but these animals are walked, they're having surgery. It's not a dog park or anything like it, so animals should never be outside that long. That's not a concern of mine at all.
Okay.
And Councilman Kurtz, the reason for the 15 minutes is out of our nuisance ordinance for barking dogs. That's the actual threshold that where it kicks in as a nuisance, so we wanted to go ahead and use that as a standard in this case as well, in case a dog was unattended and was barking for longer than 15 minutes.
I guess I'm asking if there's somebody with the dog, that dog can be out there for longer than 15 minutes.
The way this is written, it doesn't say that.
Because that's what I'm saying, that you are now precluded from staying out there for longer than 15, I don't know, maybe there's some sort of, you know, rehab that a dog's supposed to have or something, should be out there for 20 minutes. She's precluded from doing that.
The way this is written is to prevent pets from being left unattended out for longer than 15 minutes. That's correct. But if it is, if there's an attended pet that's longer than 15 minutes, the way it's written, you're correct, it would be a violation, technically speaking.
Well, beyond that, it's troublesome to me that if a dog's barking for 15 minutes, that's a problem. We have ordinance to handle that, but I don't know why we would assume that just because the dog's at the vet, it's going to be barking for the whole 15 minutes. Like, I don't want our zoning ordinances to get into how people operate businesses unless there's an undue burden on adjacent property owners. This is one of those things that I'm sorry you guys have to discuss this. I would prefer that we, my personal opinion would be that when we get to a motion on this, that we strike the timing altogether and just simply say unattended.
I agree.
All right.
I agree.
And so, anybody else have questions of clarification?
And is that, is that just for this particular instance, not for...
Well, and actually, the nuisance ordinance is still going to kick in anyway, so if the dog is barking for longer than 15 minutes, it's going to fall back on that, which, that's correct. So, but the way this is worded is it will apply to any, the way it's currently worded, it would apply to any veterinary clinic that locates in the Village Center. Of course, this, we're going to be billed out after this business opens, so...
But it's, but it's specific to just Village Center.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. All right, and so the other item, Greg, you had a question maybe about fencing?
Yes, I believe you would prefer the black vinyl coated chain link fence.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion for that.
All right, any other concerns, council has or questions?
Did we get clarification on your question, on if we make this change, if we direct this change?
I did.
Okay, and?
And, yes, they just want to get a drawing that has the note on it correctly.
But it's not a big, it's not a big thing.
It's just one page that has to be done. The question dealt with, the drawings that have been approved indicate that it's a wrought iron fence on the drawings. If we were to change that, then what do they have to do? Well, all they have to do is, my understanding, it's one site plan drawing, have to get that redone, change the wording to say coated chain link fence, or whatever it's called, and turn it in when they request their building permit, is what I've been told. So I don't think that's a big issue, and it seems like everybody was okay with that. I just want, didn't want to cause things to be a problem just because we might change.
Didn't you originally have chain link? You originally had chain link, correct?
Sir, I originally presented wrought iron fence.
At the very first P&amp;Z?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
Is that because the PD requires that? That's why you put it there?
It's because I knew it was going to be a concern, and I didn't want to discuss it.
For the animal's safety, the chain link.
For the animals and the children, a vinyl coated chain link fence is safer, no questions.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit disappointing that P&amp;Z didn't hear us in the town hall, because we actually asked the animal control officer about that, and they, that's what their recommendation was, and you would have hoped that they would have listened to that and changed it, but that's the area there.
Can't expect people to pay as much attention as we do.
I, I'm bothered, I'm bothered by the fact that we have an applicant who chooses to submit something that is not what she wants, or what she needs, or what is right, because she's afraid someone's going to have a problem with it. We have, I do not want to be the town that discourages people from asking for what they, what they should have, because they're concerned about causing a problem. So, I mean, whatever, whatever we've got on the books, that we need to, we need to look in the mirror and figure out, figure out why that is.
All right, so what we're looking for is you could make a motion to approve the amendment to PD-27, and either include or exclude any of the recommendations of P&amp;Z, and change any other recommendation, could all be done in one motion, or you could make a motion to approve it, and then we can make a motion to amend it, however you want to deal with it. Garrett?
I was going to make a comment. If Greg's going to make a motion in regards to the wrought iron versus wrought iron versus the chain link, I think we should give a waiver to this particular applicant for the chain link, not make an amendment to the PD to allow chain link throughout the PD. Just, I would be sensitive about that, because all of a sudden you change the entire PD, and then chain link can go anywhere. So I think this is a very case-specific situation where it should be granted a waiver, not necessarily a change to the PD.
So we'll make that as an amendment.
So can we, just as a clarification, can we make a waiver after we approve the change to the PD, or do we need to?
I'd like to know what the PD, what, does the PD cover waivers in the, I just haven't looked at that for that issue.
The chain link fence, the code of ordinance is, actually has regulations on pet runs, and it allows wrought iron or chain link for a pet run, but of course, it also says it shall be a solid screening fence too, so it contradicts itself, but in this case, because of that, it would not require a waiver. It just, the site plan just needs to be corrected to reflect that, so we make sure...
So it would only be applicable to a pet run, anyway?
But that's the ordinance. This particular PD allows chain link in it? That's, I guess, my question.
For the, let me research that just to make sure, because I know the residential standards are separate from the commercial standards in this PD as it relates to fences. I just want to make sure I give you the correct information.
So we have another point of clarification. The specific amendment is saying to site plan on Lot 2, Block 1, did that get it specific enough that it's nowhere else in PD-27?
Well, the site plan is specific to this lot. The zoning amendment would apply to any business that's in the, any veterinary business with an outdoor pet run in the Village Center, but there's only, there's a very limited amount of lots in the Village Center portion of PD-27.
I agree, but I think this council just does its best job to clean things up and not make it...
All right, Dennis, you had a comment?
I was just going to follow up and just say, make it on this lot and block. PD, the Village Center includes like where the Montessori school is, and where, and broadens it, and as a rule, are, we've been a chain link, excuse me, against chain link as a rule, but not in this case, so make that one thing, the lot and block, and I think you got it covered legally.
And you could include wording that and grant a waiver on fencing to allow this type of fencing for a dog run at this lot?
That's correct. On this lot and block, and that should, that should clarify it and make it legal.
All right, any other questions anybody have? Anybody want to try at a motion?
All right. Well, we're going to do the first one. So a waiver is okay? We're okay with a waiver?
The PD-27 regs do not prohibit, have no prohibitions on chain link fencing.
Here we go. Make a motion to approve amending ordinance number 2007-15, PD Plan Development District Number 27, Village Center, permitted uses in order to allow the use of a veterinarian clinic with an outdoor pet run, and to approve an amendment to the approved site plan on Lot 2, Block 1, Trophy Club Village Center, located at 2600 Bobcat Boulevard.
And do you want to include anything about granting the...
I guess we could do that.
The change for the door saying exit only? Do you, you would just want to get a, we'll get a motion and get a second?
Then we could talk.
All right, we have a second to Greg's motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor from Greg Lamott, and a second from Jim Perro. Any discussion?
I'd like to amend the motion.
Yes.
I'd like to amend the motion, state that the permitted uses be amended, allowing the following use: pet services, including veterinarian, without outdoor kennels. Approved veterinary clinics may contain an outdoor pet run, provided said area does not create a nuisance, does not contain unattended pets, and is visually screened from the view of any public area, including but not limited to a parking lot. That the main exterior door for Room 103, shown on Page 5, labeled building plan in Exhibit B, be labeled as exit only. That the shrubs shown on the southwest corner of the property on the landscape plan, shown as Page L101 on Exhibit B, connect to the existing shrubs on Lot 1, Block 1, Trophy Club Village Center.
All right, do you have a second? All right, so Ron and Rowe made a motion, and it is seconded by Jim Perro. Any discussion on the amendment?
I have a concern.
Yes?
Can we put a timeline on the unattended pets? Uh, because if there's an animal that's covered in diarrhea and it's got a cage that needs to be cleaned, I just don't want thirty seconds to become a fine or something.
Yeah, I'll just modify the amendment to include the fifteen minutes again, as it was before.
That's perfect.
You want it.
Unattended for fifteen minutes.
That's perfect, that's plenty.
Um, anyway, for, for Holly's sake and the sake of the discussion of the motion, basically what I did was take the, the P and Z conditions, but, um, replace does not contain a pet for does not contain an unattended pet, that's basically the only difference. And then.
You want to do the waiver?
Oh, I thought you already did that in your motion.
No, 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 he didn't. As long as you got it going now.
And, and permit the use of a vinyl coated chain link fence on lot one, block one of Trophy Club Village Center for the purposes of a, of a, of a dog run, yeah, lot two, block one.
Thanks.
Does the second agree to the change of the amendment? All right, uh, so we have a motion to amend with a second that, uh, connects the shrubs, uh, allows for an outdoor pet run with a limit of fifteen minutes unattended and, um, allows the door to be the way it's designed with an indication that it's, uh, exit only and, uh, granting a waiver, uh, for the fencing material to be from wrought iron to.
Vinyl coated.
Vinyl coated chain link.
And the shrubs on the corner.
Yeah, I said that. So, have we, have we included everything, Ron?
Yes.
Anybody think we're missing anything? Did get complicated. All right, we'll call the vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. We will now vote on the main motion as amended, any other discussion? Ron, we're okay, we're clear?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the main motion as amended, show your hands. It is unanimous, it is approved, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, just, just one moment, I think, are you addressing them, Philip?
Yes, uh, I, I know that this has been a tough road, you've had to do a little bit more than most, uh, have, have to go through. I just want to say that I think most, I think all of this council is very happy that you're coming here, so I just want you to know that.
Yes, I just took our dog today to, uh, South Lake, so we much prefer, we can almost walk there, actually.
You have your first client.
So, we're glad to have you here and thank you so much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. All right, um. Thirteen, yeah, but I just wrote this on the wrong. Change where I wrote it. Okay, item number thirteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-five dash twenty P and Z and ordinance number twenty sixteen dash oh two P and Z, Plan Development District number thirteen, in order to amend certain development requirements and the approved signage plan for meet you anywhere restaurant on lot three, the village located at ninety-one Trophy Club Drive, case PD AMD sixteen dash oh forty-eight, Ron, do you have any comments?
Just briefly, this involves the town logo sign, it, uh, ended up being constructed upside down or flipped from where it should have been, so it's underneath the meet you anywhere logo. Also, just as a smaller note, the plan showed that, uh, the plan that was approved by council showed that it's brushed aluminum, however, it was constructed with white lettering and the blue star, which was the original proposal, which changed later to brushed aluminum, which got approved by council. The other change is to the landscape plan, they've, um, added a more drought tolerant mix to the landscaping, probably the biggest and most noticeable, noticeable change is that the ground covers changed from grass to crushed granite. The, uh, landscape regs in the PD thirteen, uh, ordinance, as well as the code of ordinances, don't allow for any kind of non-grass ground cover, or at least not for rock anyway, so this is what they're, the main thing they're requesting on the landscape plan. Um, that's it, I'm glad to answer any questions.
All right, Dennis, any comments? All right, uh, council, um, I would entertain a motion unless you have some questions.
I'll move to amend the ordinance number ninety-five twenty P and Z, ordinance number twenty sixteen dash oh two P and Z, uh, Planned Development District number thirteen, in order to amend certain development requirements and the approved signage plan is submitted for meet you anywhere restaurant on lot three, the village located at ninety-one Trophy Club Drive.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion moved by Councilmember Perro, a second by Mayor Pro- Pro Tim Lamont, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, it does pass unanimously.
We should email Andy and Dusty and tell them it failed.
All right, item fourteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding Harmony Park Parking Lot and Independence Park West Parking Lot adjacent to the Veterans Memorial, receive a presentation from Teague, Knoll and Perkins Discussion of Same. Tom, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Is it this one?
All right, good evening. Came, uh, after we had the last time we met with you, there were some things you guys asked, uh, for us to do with respect to the parking lots, so I want to go through those with you again this evening. First one is the Veterans Memorial Parking Lot, of course, we, we all kind of generally have an idea about what we're talking about. This is what we had before, the one change that we did here that you commented on was about the golf cart parking. And so, you can see that we've indicated it here, um, we've kind of worked with staff a little bit, trying to just to get an idea and, and generally, you guys had said, let's look at something in this area, so this is what that looks like, uh, up there in that area. Um, this is the one where, uh, we increased the parking spaces to sixty-seven, so I didn't bring all those others because this was the option C that you asked for in here, so just want to see if this looks like we're on target with what you want us to do before we proceed with design.
Anybody have any questions or comments about that design?
Yeah, the, the only, the only thing that we mentioned is, uh, two golf cart parking down by the, closer to the memorial, but maybe we had directed that we were going to do that in-house, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can't remember.
There was some talk about you guys looking, I think there was a bigger picture of the golf cart parking and, uh, and certainly, you know, this is a placeholder for you, if you just said, well, we still want to do something, I mean, we're, we're, we're in the process of starting to work on this design, so, you know, things will be able to be cut out in here, if you wanted to tuck it in here, um, I mean, there's always things that we can do with some of this parking.
I think with where the cursor is right there, if you move down to the curb towards the parking field.
I'm sorry?
If you go up towards the parking field.
Okay, if I can get that.
We lost it right there, that little green space right there, my guess is if we just made the curb.
Sloped?
Yeah, cut, then we could come after the fact and put the pavers there and add a couple of spots. I think it was, I think it was mainly for school, you know, beck and you have a lot of golf.
My impression was the same as what Tom said, which was, was we kind of wanted to be opportunistic in the future, but didn't have any specific thoughts except for the one that you've got in the plan.
I would just leave an opportunity to, you know, to cut that or slope that curb so we can drop something in there later.
Okay.
We can, we can figure it out.
We'll try to set the, because this path is up, up a little bit, and so what we'll do in the design, we'll keep all of this up relative to this so that it doesn't create a steep slope or anything.
Okay.
And, and then that way you can come back and do what you, whatever you want to do.
And I think what we were also trying to accomplish was not take parking spaces for golf cart parking, we, we need as much parking as we can get over there, so I think you've accomplished that fact by giving us some space to do that.
All right.
Is, is the golf cart parking that you have is, is, are you, will you design that just with those pavers, not, not concrete?
You know, that's the direction we were headed unless you have the other direction, we were going to use the pavers.
Yeah, no, that's good.
You guys had commented in one of these sessions about what you liked at the barbecue place, those pavers, and so that's what we were looking to do.
Okay.
Is that good?
Okay. Any other questions about that particular, so, Tommy, you're clear, it looks like you've got the direction there as long as sloped curb or some elevation there takes care of everything, all right?
Yeah, and we can, we'll just kind of roll this curb over in here and just set those grades and grass it for now and then you can come back later. Okay, all right, and then over at Harmony Park, there was quite a bit of discussion.
Dennis, did you have a comment about that you wanted to make, so come on up, I'm sorry.
It's, uh, the.
The first one, that one?
That one. Um, the question is, does the, um, rule of twelve parking spots between landscape apply to this particular, uh, location? And, uh, that if it did, then it could it just be waived at the council's, uh, decision?
Okay, yeah, and we can, we can always add a, a tree leave out in here if we need to do that.
Well, this is parkland.
Yep.
So, I don't know that answer.
Wow, we need all the parking.
I'd rather wait, if it does, let's waive it.
Let's intend on that, but it would be good to check.
I researched that and see if we need to do a waiver, uh, for that, but, but we need all the parking we can get there.
Indeed.
All right.
Because it'll come back when you got cost estimates and everything anyway.
And, and I do have an estimate here that we've prepared, uh, as we've updated this for you, we've done a fairly detailed estimate because if, if I understand on this, Stephen, we're, after we get approval, our direction is to proceed to design and to bid it.
Correct.
Unless we're needing to come back before we do that, is that?
If that sounds like.
Okay.
All right. Are we also going to leave that little golf cart square up there in, in the upper left corner as well? So, people that want to park there for the other area in the park might have a closing area?
Yeah, that's the paved stone part I was talking about.
At the top?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're including that in this design, are the golf carts?
All right. Okay, all right.
So, we're, we're intended for action, so should we make a motion on this lot and then move forward or?
Uh, well, let's see what else he has and then we'll, uh, maybe can make one motion to do the whole thing.
Okay, all right, so Harmony Park, this is just what we had option A the last time and I think the comment, Philip, you'd made about, hey, well, we should need more parking than what we had here, so you gave us some, you kind of, kind of took the reins off us a little bit and said, let's go see what we can do, because this design, if you recall, we were respecting that thirty-foot setback, that buffer that's here, and so that was what was constraining this design, and so, uh, we were told to, to take a look at it, be a little more aggressive. So, I've got, I have actually have three more options and they're just, they're progressive, so I'll just let you guys, let, just walk you through it. So, here we went ahead and we got within ten feet of that property line and you can see we had, have shrubs and trees and then we, we, uh, tucked this back down here as well within ten feet, now these, as we said before, these future trees, this future landscaping is a part of this, uh, development here. And then we just squeezed it over and stayed just to the east side of the, this power pole, although we all know that in, when this development to the south comes along, that's supposed to go away, but we just stopped it there so you could see what this looked like, and then we have golf cart parking here. So, that got us up to forty-eight spaces compared to the other one, that original one was thirty-one, so we're just kind of going to increase this and you can see what happens. So, then the next one is just to go ahead and go further and just go the other side, and what we were doing was there's these existing trees, so we just went what we thought we could get as close to those trees and leave those in, and that's essentially the only real change there, it kind of opens this up here so you gain four more spaces and you get to fifty-two and then still have that golf cart parking down there. And then based on the comment, I think you're, you kind of made a comment the last time, said, hey, let's go.
Yeah.
And so, we, we went ahead and, and we still left the trail in, there's a storage building over there, Adam, I, I don't know what, it looks like it'd be easy to move, it's not on a concrete bound. Okay, so it didn't look like it's a challenge to move it, so this is being, uh, very aggressive and, uh, so we're all the way over here and then by doing that, we just pulled that golf cart parking into here because that with that island, it looked like an appropriate place to put it, but if you got preferences, um, we can go somewhere else. So, this puts us to seventy-one spaces, so.
I, I like the last option personally.
Yeah, and unless you think, uh, soccer is going to lose participants, you're going to need that because it's just going to get bigger and bigger.
That was there tomorrow, you, well, there's no soccer tomorrow, but y'all know what I mean, you'd fill it up and still have people on the street.
Yeah.
So, right now, I understand is that people park on Hillside Place.
Right.
And, and other parts around there, so they already have a lot of traffic on that street, so you might increase the traffic with seventy-one spaces, but they're going to get off the street.
Right. Well, you may still have some on the street because they will fill that up.
They will fill that up too?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you go there on a Saturday morning, tho- those, I would think that if I was a resident that lived over there, a couple houses away from this, I would like this.
Yeah.
Because on Saturday morning, they got families walking up and down the streets, kids, if you want to mow your yard on Saturday, you got cars parked all up down that street.
People at the hotels would love it too.
All right.
The only, the only thing I'm thinking about this is, um, Philip had made a good point when we first started talking about the golf cart stuff, about how you can't lock your stuff up in your golf cart. Was that you?
Yeah.
And?
I don't have anything.
If, if y'all feel like that's still, because I don't really, I don't go down to that corner of the park, I don't have a feel for how close it is, but I don't know if you feel like that's still close enough to that field and, and whatever that it's, uh, or if we want to try to do something where we kind of put it over, kind of, and move the trail a little bit or something or whatever.
That's a proposed tree we dropped in, it's kind of like on the other one, we can always not landscape in this area if you want to, uh, have that, uh.
I like using the island anyway because it's space that screams for something to be used, you know, or, you know.
If you go back to Garrett's kind of comment on the other location, if that curved area by that tree you were pointing to, if you didn't put a curb and you put a ramped curb, people can park under the tree on the grass for that matter, if they want to be able to see their cart better.
Yeah. I, I think that that's a good loc, actually, I think that's a great location, um, I think that, that if you're, if you're actually going there for soccer, you're probably not going to have your golf clubs and things like that, I think what Garrett, what Garrett is talking about, what Garrett is talking about is basketball and things that he just goes, you know, but if you're, if you're specifically going there with your kids, you know, for soccer, for practice, whatever, that would be a pretty good location, I think.
Yeah, and I think, I think with what, we talked about that and the other day, I think we're going to provide some other options in the park. If, like, if you didn't have anything in your golf cart, you wouldn't mind leaving here, but if I had my clubs, I'd maybe go to one of the other spots. So, I, I think that's a good use of the island, I, I applaud this part.
That's twenty golf cart spaces in addition to the seventy-one is what that says, so you have ninety spaces, which.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and golf cart parking is not, I mean, it's not striped, so, but still, yeah, you could get that many in there.
All right, Tom? Go ahead.
And that's, and that's it.
All right, so, um.
So, that's option D.
We can, we can take action if you would like to, to be real specific, um, if you're talking about the parking at Harmony, um, can you toggle back to that, go back to that? Uh, we want option, if you want option C, that's what you want to be specific about, and if you want to say that you want to get the sloped curb in a particular area, then you could do that, and then you want option, potentially you want option D, which was the last one with seventy-one places.
Can you go back to option D real quick?
Yes.
Did you avoid the Musco system?
It kind of looks like it's where that handicap, that.
There's, there's a green box, do you know where that's at, Adam?
Yeah, it's over in the corner, I was, I couldn't really tell, it looks like it's really close to it.
You're talking about.
Where basically our whole power grid, all the light system goes, it's the Musco.
No, it's kind of, it's right around there. Isn't it, Adam?
Can you see it on a, uh, Google map?
Oh, yeah, Google.
When we survey that, which we didn't initially go out there and survey, what we can do is look at it and if we, I mean, if we have to go in here and just block out around it in here for some reason, because you're right, we don't want to mess with that, that's not cheap.
Yeah, that's not good.
Yeah.
Uh, so what we'd end up doing is we would end up just moving these handicap spaces probably over here and bring that curb around it, create an island for it.
Okay.
But, uh, great comment.
So, Ron is trying to see.
So Ryan's trying to see.
Yeah, you can't really see anything from the aerial. It must kinda be a little bit shaded by the trees or whatever. But yeah, worst case, you lose a couple spaces, I guess, and it's not a substantive change to the plan.
All right. Does someone wanna make a motion about this?
I'll make a motion. Uh, make a motion to um, direct staff to work with TNP to move forward with the um, Independence West Parking Lot Option C as presented tonight. With additional consideration for um, changes to curbs to encourage future golf cart parking uses. And also to move forward with Harmony Park Proposed Parking Option D as presented tonight.
Second.
Philip, did you second?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe and a second by Councilmember uh, Schaffner. Any discussion?
Can I make an amendment to the motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to add that we um, also direct the Parks Department to um, find an adequate um, substitution for the uh, existing storage space out there.
Second.
Second.
All right. So uh, Councilmember Reed moved and Councilmember Schaffner seconded uh, on the amendment. Any?
And I, and I'll speak to that.
All right.
We uh, we we've sort of identified a spot for stor- for actually triple the storage. I think I measured uh, on Google Maps that could be uh, a really great location and a really nice building. So I think that that's a, a good motion.
All right. So we'll vote on the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. The amendment does pass unanimously. Now we're back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion? Tom, you have any questions?
I do not.
Thanks to you guys for turning this back around.
You're welcome.
No.
All in favor of the motion as amended, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does pass un- unanimously. Tom, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to, so what we're, what we're doing is with approving this, um, y'all are gonna move forward with plans and uh, go out for bid.
That's right. Should be out to bid in a couple of months here. We'll get the surveys done and start designing.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight, Tom. Item number fifteen, receive an update from staff regarding the upcoming July fourth celebration and discussion of same. I think you had a handout at your uh, diocese tonight, council. And Adam, are you making the report or whom?
I think I am. Um, Mayor and Council, I was just gonna go over some of the changes. Uh, our website is up to date. Um, we sent out a e-blast today that I believe I sent it to y'all called elastic instead of e-blast.
Autocorrect, gotcha.
Yeah, it did. Well, that and I was in Meet You Anywhere ordering breakfast tacos. My mom called and I rejected her and sent the email on before looking at it. Um, there's not a lot of changes this year. I just wanted to walk through it real quick. You can read faster than I can talk. Um, the morning starts out at seven fifteen with the Patriot five K and fun run. There's nothing unusual about that. That's something we've been doing for quite a while. Uh, followed that is the Parade of Patriots at nine thirty. Once again, um, that starts at Byron Nelson. I'll direct you over to the second page real quick, just while we're looking at that, just for the parade route. And the parade route.
Can can I ask a question about the first page?
Yes, sir. I was gonna jump back to it in just a minute.
Oh, okay. You can keep going then.
Okay. I was just gonna go to the parade route and then we'll go back to the front page. Um, the parade route is similar. It exits Byron Nelson, uh, heads down Bobcat to Trophy Club Drive. Goes down Trophy Club Drive to Durango and then back up to Parkview. We are taking uh, both lanes of traffic, I believe. That is the the current plan. There is the ability, the blue arrows that you see, the ability is for the Highlands, you can get in um, down there off of uh, Galloway. The the turn in down there, you can get into Highlands still. But just like in years before, the homes within the blue circle, they will be blocked until the parade route passes their home. I think that's a lot of your world, Greg. Um, Lilyfield, those type homes will be, will be in until the parade passes them. I'll go back to the.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, where it says no pedestrians allowed on the median on the east side of Trophy Club between Durango and Galloway. So that's right up there against the wall where it's hard to access. Um, is that new or I I always go to the other side, so have we done that in years past?
Yes, um.
Changing on people?
Yes, we did. We had, we had a year, we didn't get it all fenced up and people just barreled on through. And so you had cars moving in there and it, it's just a little tricky. So yes, we've done that in years past. I'll go back to the um.
All right, go back to the first page and Councilmember Schaffner's question.
Over on the Celebration and Fireworks, six P M. to ten P M., uh, middle of the first paragraph, it says, "All entertainment and activities are free to residents and ten dollars for non-residents." Have you already printed this?
Um, this is just on the, this should just be on the website.
Cause we're not, we're not charging for entertainment. We're just charging for specific things, correct?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, it isn't, it isn't the evening entertainment. It talks about that later on there. It, maybe we need to tweak that a little bit. It's not, it is not the music and the fireworks, obviously.
Right, right.
It is just the inflatables, the face painters, all of that nature.
Cause, cause then it goes on, wristbands are required for everyone and will be available on site. So it's, it's, it's a little, I mean, you would think that you, if you're a non-resident, you would have to pay ten dollars to do, just to come in.
Okay, then we'll, we'll clarify that, cause that's not the case.
The other thing is Holiday Inn and Homewood Suites are not gonna be open.
It says, well, two thousand sixteen.
So why list them?
We, we can, we can remove them.
Next year you can put them there, but.
Well, you can put Homewood there next year, the other one, we'll see.
It's just.
Okay.
I'll take any chance I get.
Somebody's gonna call and I understand that you're trying to include everybody, but. All right. Uh, so Greg.
The ten dollars, you say non-residents, is it ten dollars just for children if they wanna use the bounce stuff?
Yes, it's just for the ones that wanna use the, so we anticipate your adults aren't gonna pay.
It doesn't really read that way.
It's just going to um. Okay.
Does need to read better.
Okay, we'll, we'll tweak that up. It, it says it more on the website a little differently. This just is hot off the press this evening, so we will tweak that up. And I do have a map, just wanted to think, the last, the the map on the end, real quick. This is the map that shows both where we're proposing. There's been some discussion on golf cart parking. And then as far as wristband, so what you're looking at is in the east, up in the, up in the corner here is Parkview. So we're looking at golf cart parking coming in here and moving toward the concession stand across the green space. One of the things I'd like you to consider is, I I know there was a suggestion, we need some golf cart parking. But we also agreed for events, you can't move up the center toward the concession area. It'll be a nightmare. There's people everywhere. And the parking is extremely limited. Byron Nelson, there is no parking at all at Byron Nelson this year. So that took off the entire back of the parking lot. So it's very tight. So what we felt to basically allow for cars to come in is the golf cart parking would literally come up the multi-use field. Um, and where the black thing is, you can get out on foot at that point and you're gonna walk right to the wristband area. Cause the wristbands will be both for residents and non-residents. Uh, now what we are planning on doing is where we have multiple lines for this, the residents, it's, it's free. You just have to show proof of I D. But we are putting the wristbands on the participants. That's the game plan at this point. So in other words, if you're a resident, you need to bring the participants up with you that need a wristband. This is the first time, this may be, this may create a little confusion the first year because one of the things, and we're gonna strive. We have signs going all the way down the walkway saying this because, in other words, you, your children need to come up with you to put the wristbands on them for the residents. It's free and you need to bring proof of I D. And we'll be hitting this on e-blast, our website, um, everywhere we can. For the non-residents, it's obviously ten dollars for those that wanna use it.
Do I have a question about that? Is there a way that we could issue wristbands prior days in advance, cause the fourth is on Monday?
Maybe at the pool.
Right? And and if they forget them, they forget them. But I, the issue I see is these long lines of kids trying to get a wristband. And if you don't have enough people to issue them, it's just gonna get frustrating again.
That was discussed. That would then, then obviously you would not put them on them when they, when they got up there. Cause if they're getting them at the pool, they, they're not gonna wear them days ahead.
That's right. That's right.
And the hotels are getting the, um, obviously the same wristbands as the residents.
So give that some, some consideration. I'm just concerned about the long lines when it happened. And then the other comment I have is uh, for the last two years, the parade moves way too slow.
Come on now.
We have, we have tweaked it quite a bit.
Way too slow.
Done with you.
And I don't know, I can't remember who was in front last year, what was the deal, but.
A grand marshal, we're at the mayor.
But was the fire truck in front?
The very front was literally a banner carried by a few people on foot.
Yeah, he's right.
And they came by and then it was over a hundred yards before you had your next thing. And I was like.
So whoever's driving vehicles after the banner.
Like one guy.
Needs to pick it up a little bit, if you would. I'm not asking for it to be.
I have been assured that we've tightened the gaps.
Okay, well.
Cause you're right. There were some, I ended up on stationed on a corner and I was like, well, there goes one person is, where's the rest of the parade? So yes, there's some gaps, but we've been assured that those gaps have been tightened up, accounting for both walkers and drivers.
Yeah, the Stars and Stripes Committee discussed that at their last meeting.
So if it was the fire truck driving too slow, or whatever is there, it needs to speed up a little bit. Did you want it slower?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I, I was able to walk slowly the whole time, which was way too long.
Yeah, okay. Great. All right.
Ah, I thought it was.
So that's, that's my comment. Anybody else have a comment?
I have a comment. Yeah, going back to the wristbands, did, have you planned, if you were doing it all at the event, how many people were actually going to be there handing them out? So how many different lines you were gonna have? Are you gonna have twenty people handing out wristbands, thirty people?
Right now, I believe uh, we, um, Assistant Town Manager and I and some of my staff, we were there, all there yesterday. I think we're four lines.
Yeah, that'll.
It's four lines.
That'll never work. Yeah. You'll be. I, you'll just be hammered by people complaining the whole time. It's not, we should find a better.
Gonna have to have people walk in the line.
To make it easier for you folks, it's gonna be, we should come up with an alternate solution.
If you have multiple locations, that spreads out the line.
The four lines is gonna be, I mean, you think of how many people we get at this, yeah.
That would be one advantage of doing it beforehand, if you did it, is you could disseminate some of the wristbands early.
So you're saying four total lines for both residents and non-residents?
Four lines.
Yeah, you, you need.
I, I, you thought you need like twenty, twenty lines.
I agree with Nick that you, you should open this up month ahead, you know, for residents to be able to get those. Cause you wanna, I think you want to limit the amount of residents that have to stand in line and so that most of your lines can cater to people who are buying them, because that's gonna be a money exchange. And the other, the other thing that I've heard you mention that, that kind of concerns me is that you're gonna try to get information from people? Are you still thinking about that?
That would not be in this area though. That would be at the, the, one of the town booths, so to speak.
Okay, so, cause I thought that, I thought that you were originally.
No, 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 no filling out.
Still, a money exchange is gonna take time.
Well, you're gonna need at least four lines just for the money exchange. I mean, that's for the out of town residents, you're gonna need that. I would suggest, you know, starting the week before at the pool, you have people there giving them away, you know. Whatever, whatever it is. I mean, a month if people are gonna use them.
I would suggest you have a couple extra personnel and you walk the resident line, rather than have them wait one at a time. Just go down the line, show me your I D. How many, how many you got? Give them to.
Chick-fil-A style, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I, um, uh, Assistant Town Manager's working out, we'll, we'll, we'll tweak it then.
Try to get that done as rapidly as we can.
Okay.
I mean, how many people did, did we get there last year?
All in all, probably close to four thousand, but that was running through most of the day. I mean, the event itself, you're probably talking a little over two.
You only need wristbands if you're gonna participate in uh, the, I'm gonna call them ride.
It's every kid though, right?
Yes, sir.
Just, just for kids, so.
Two thousand kids.
Adults don't need them.
Somehow it needs to say that's the only people that need wristbands.
Yeah, the, the worst thing that can happen is that someone stands, but it's gonna need to be on sight very clear too. Cause the worst thing that can happen is that someone stands in line for a wristband or even pays for one. Um, although that's kinda funny. And then there's nothing they can do with a wristband.
So, so is there no way to put these activities beyond a barrier? So that, so that if you enter that particular area, you're gonna need a wristband. If you don't, you don't need one for the, for the band, for thing, for food, things like that. You're not gonna need that wristband.
No, you don't. The, the layout is, is up there now. So you're, the majority of what you need wristbands for is contained in the athletic areas, the fields themselves.
Can you have it one way in and one way out on that?
Yes, there is actually.
So, okay.
So it's like, so it's set up that way, Philip, in that case, cause if you look at that slide right there, you've got wristbands in between the two.
So the only things that you wouldn't have is, is face painting basically on the outside?
Right, they would be on the outside.
Okay. I, it's, I mean, it's a great idea because the line is unbelievable. You know, you can wait an hour with your daughter and your son and miss a lot of, you know, miss a lot of things just because you're waiting to get face painted or waiting to get a balloon or whatever, you know, the.
And we have cutoff times too, cause we obviously don't want somebody buying, we're not gonna let some of the cutoff times, eight thirty, for those people paying for wristbands, cause we don't want somebody to buy a wristband and they can't even use it if they buy it that late.
Yeah.
So there's, there's cutoff times for that.
If an adult wants to go on something, they also need it. If they wanna do, there's no real adult stuff, right?
No, there's really not.
I mean, even the, even the wall is not really for adults.
Yeah, it's really not. It would be a little awkward.
So it's just kids?
Yes, just kids.
All right.
And we will work on, like I said, we'll work on your comments tonight, um, and look at those and uh, and probably the town, Assistant Town Manager can email you the changes. We can tweak it up a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Anybody else have a question? Thanks, everybody, for working on that. Item sixteen, I believe, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, consider to take appropriate action regarding a resolution, repealing Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash oh eight to make an appointment to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board to fill the remainder of an expired term, reaffirming existing appointments, reaffirming the chair and the council liaison and providing an effective date. Uh, so do I have someone wishing to make a motion?
Oh, make a motion.
All right, Lamont.
Make a motion repealing Resolution twenty sixteen dash oh eight and to adopt Resolution Number twenty sixteen dash fifteen to appoint Pamela Swan to finish the unexpired term number six to nine thirty twenty seventeen and reaffirm existing appointments, reaffirming the chair and the council liaison and providing an effective date of June fourteenth twenty sixteen. I will second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, a second by Councilmember Rowe. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. So Holly, if you'll, uh, I think you notified Pamela and um, notify the other people, appreciate their applying and uh, continue to, to deal with it. And we've been advertising accepting uh, applications for all boards at this point. All right. Uh, council item number seventeen. We have intended to go into executive session uh, at the end of the meeting tonight to discuss uh, the review committee, that interview committee that, that interviewed all the people for the uh, Building Standards Commission. The intent was that if you wanted to come out and take action, you could come out and take action and it would be specific. But my recommendation at this point is that we skip seventeen, we go into executive session, discuss that. Uh, I think the uh, interview committee is uh, in, of, in favor of having one meeting where we discuss the appointments. And then at the following meeting, we actually make the appointments uh, at, at that time.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so uh, just didn't communicate that.
You don't wanna appoint them after you discuss them?
Nah.
Why do you gotta wait two weeks?
Oh, I would just, you don't have to, but I mean, it, it, it's easier just to get in that habit of doing that.
I would say, well, to me, well, I mean, I don't know when we, if it's okay to discuss this now. But for me, if we're gonna discuss, if we, if we have an opportunity to discuss the candidates, then we might as well be agended to appoint them. What's gonna change? It seems like a swifter way to do business.
All right. So uh, I'm still gonna suggest that we skip that at this point, finish our agenda. We're going to executive session, come back and when we come out of executive session, if you choose to do so, council, you could. Uh, again, uh, I'm not sure that the, the three of us felt like we necessarily wanted to make the decision. It was like, let's get it on the agenda, talk about it, we can decide what you wanna work and go forward with it. Any objection to going past seventeen?
Nope.
All right, item eighteen, considering take appropriate action regarding appointing three council members to a council subcommittee. to a council subcommittee formed by the purpose of providing fiduciary oversight of the budget, as well as providing input regarding the administration of the budget and the budget process. Anyone wish to make a motion? Nobody wants the budget.
We all have it anyway. It's a good point.
It's all, it also has served as the audit committee, so I don't know if that's exciting to anybody.
Correct.
Hold on. It's one of these things you really should discuss, but, um, let's see where.
All right, so, so we've been forming this, uh, council subcommittee for budget and audit, uh, for some time. And, um, at this point, uh, it was a three-member board. Who served, uh, besides myself last year? I can't remember.
Uh, Councilmember Perro and, and Councilmember Lamont.
Okay. All right.
All right, I'll try this. All right.
All right. Lamont.
Make a motion, uh, to appoint Mayor Nick Sanders, Councilman Jim Perro, Councilman Greg Lamont to a council subcommittee formed for the purpose of providing fiduciary oversight of the budget, as well as providing input regarding the administration of the budget and the budget process.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody objecting to being on it?
All right. Motion made by Mayor Protem Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Rowe, uh, forming the committee with the mayor, Councilmember Perro, and Lamont. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Number nineteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding appointing the mayor and two council members to the Town Council Appointments Committee. This group, uh, interviews all the applicants, uh, screen those, and then ends up making a recommendation to council, uh, about that. Uh, so, uh, this year that we are finishing, uh, Councilmember Kurtz and Rowe, uh, were with me on that. And then at times when we couldn't, uh, get everybody together, uh, we would invite another council member to participate in the interview. And we would also try to invite the chair of whatever group that we're dealing with to be part of that interview process as, as we could. Uh, if you do that this year, uh, it, I don't know if there's any objection to the way that we ask someone else to be a member of it to attend another council person who was available. You don't have to specify the alternate, but the intent was at least try to get three people there if we could. And that's not always easy, based on the times. All right. Anybody wishing to make a motion of these appointments?
I'll make a motion. We appoint, uh, Nick Sanders, Tim Kurtz, and Rylan Rowe to this committee.
Second.
All right, so the motion by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Schoffner, to form the committee of the mayor, Tim Kurtz, and Rylan Rowe. Any other discussion?
I was just gonna say, I think it worked, to your comments earlier, I think, I think it was our first run through it. It was an idea that Philip had last year when we were looking at the handbook, and I think it worked well. It was an improvement over the previous process and that it gave the council as a body a little bit better insight into all the candidates. And I think the way it's described in the handbook provides for a flexible operation like you described, to where if, uh, someone has a scheduling conflict, or, or, or what have you, or if there's other, other reasons, you can bring in other people to talk to candidates, so.
Yes, Dan.
Good job, Philip.
And we're talking about from now on, moving forward, going into executive session to speak about the candidates. Okay, yeah, I like that, moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that, I like that too, and I, I do agree with, with, uh, Rylan. It probably is good just to come out and make the decision.
Yes.
Ooh. So I'll give him credit for that, but, uh, but I, I, I do like that we've kinda tweaked that now, that we, you know, because it was hard getting, we really didn't know what the appointments committee heard, or what they, you know, discussed, or recommendations, or anything. So this gives us an opportunity to, to do that.
Dan?
One last thing, I think, um, on the subcommittee, I think at any time, if any other councilman wants to be in an interview, I think we're more than happy for one of us to step out once in a while, and have, so if you're feeling strongly about being there for some board, just ask and one of us will step out. I, I think we're fine, totally fine with that.
We didn't necessarily, uh, do the best job, I think, trying to say, oh, well, who's the council liaison for that group?
Right.
And of course, if you invite them, then somebody else has to not come because we then have a quorum, so.
Right, but I think we're fine with that, one of us.
We should probably try to do a better job of that.
And it, and it helps now, cause, cause we can go into executive session and discuss, whereas before, you know, um, you sort of relied on that. So some, so you can kinda interchange as you go along. You're, you're correct.
All right. All right, uh, any other discussion? Hearing now to call for the vote. All those in favor of approving, um, um, Tim Kurtz, Rylan Rowe, and myself on that committee, please show your hands. It is unanimous, it does pass. Item twenty, consider to take appropriate action regarding general fund revenue items. Steven, you gonna deal with that?
I still don't think we should call it revenue.
Takings.
Blood money.
Can we start calling it, can we start calling it takings?
The general fund takings.
Could be, could be worse. I could've said seizures.
Peppermint.
That's a little, that's, that assumes we're wasting it. There we go.
It, it's up now. Okay, so, so this is a presentation over, uh, two thousand seventeen general fund revenue. And this is a little more colorful than, than all the other presentations I give. There's a lot of nice graphs and comparisons, uh, going throughout this one. So this is basically a look at, at what the property tax rate has been, uh, for the last several years. So, as you can see, excuse me, two thousand eleven, we were, we were up at fifty-one and a half cents, and then, then an increase. And then from that point, it's steadily been going down, or, or the same tax rate. Um, and based on, um, discussion at the council retreat, we're proposing the, uh, same tax rate of forty-eight point four cents uh, for the two thousand seventeen fiscal year. Uh, this graph is basically, uh, property tax revenue by year. Um, so you can see, uh, the, the heavy growth years of the, uh, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. And then as you look, uh, going forward, we kinda taper off, and everything from seventeen on is based on the current, uh, tax rate of forty-eight point four cents. Uh, for the current year, we anticipate collecting, um, you know, all of the, uh, budgeted revenue. Um, and we're, we're already a little bit over on the, uh, delinquent, uh, property taxes. And we anticipate about seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, over from what we budgeted on that. Uh, this slide is a comparison of what we're estimating for the two thousand sixteen property taxes, and, uh, what we're proposing, uh, for the two thousand seventeen property taxes, based on, uh, our value projections and the, uh, tax rate of forty-eight point four cents. Um, so, so of that amount, uh, and it's basically, looks like an increase of approximately, uh, six hundred thousand dollars in property tax revenue. Of that amount, uh, between, uh, approximately three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand is from new properties. Um, sales tax, sales tax revenue, um, and it, it, as you look further, uh, down the spectrum with some of the economic development, um, things that are going to happen, uh, you can see that we, we have a, a very large increase in a couple of years. Um, we've been a little less conservative in some of these projections, based on some, some things that we know. Uh, so, um, we're, we're estimating a fairly substantial increase from the current year, uh, to next year, and then going forward with some of the things that are gonna happen in Trophy Wood, and anticipation of, uh, some things that would happen in PD thirty, um, increasing. And then, uh, you know, hopefully by, you know, two thousand twenty, we anticipate it getting up over a million dollars, uh, which was, which is a fairly large increase from, from where it was, you know, in two thousand twelve, almost, almost double. So we were, we were just at about six hundred thousand, and then, then we anticipate it going up, uh, up over a million. And this is a comparison of the two components of sales tax, mixed beverage tax, which is fairly small, that we don't, uh, you know, the, the state gets most of that. We, we get a large, a large piece of mixed beverage tax, or, I'm sorry, a small piece of mixed beverage tax, and then our general fund sales tax. We, we're anticipate being about, you know, thirty, thirty to fifty thousand over what we budgeted in the two thousand sixteen year. And then as you can see in two thousand seventeen, with Meet You Anywhere opening, Bread Winners opening, um, we anticipate, uh, that increasing fairly substantially, and, and, you know, also the, uh, regular, you know, current businesses, we've seen growth, growth in those which contribute to that.
So, go back to that. The mixed beverage, that, so are you considering Bread Winners in that?
Yes.
And, and that's all you think the jump will be, is two thousand dollars?
Well, we only get that one quarterly, so it's, you know, basically a ten percent. The club actually, the Crunchy Club, that actually does really well on mixed beverage tax, so.
It just seems like with, uh, you know, them having quarter bar, that you would see a bigger jump than that, but you're always conservative.
Well, when you look at mixed beverage tax, that the state basically gets thirteen or fourteen times more than what we get. So it, you know, you really have to sell a lot of alcohol to get anything. So that's basically assuming that they're gonna sell about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of alcohol, which, you know, seems like quite a bit. You know, now if they do a million, then we'd get, you know, up, up to thirty thousand. It doesn't increase it that much.
You're talking about hard alcohol, not, not beer and wine, or does that include beer and wine?
Uh, I believe it does.
Oh, they'll definitely do a million, easy.
Okay, well, it's an estimate at this point, so.
All right.
Uh, franchise fees. We have five components of franchise fees, uh, gas, electricity, uh, telephone, cable, and, um, refuse. Um, as you can see, if you look at the two thousand sixteen going forward, uh, from action, uh, that council took last year, on the refuse side and the, um, gas side, you can see that those bumped up quite a bit. Um, actually, this year, industrial on the, um, refuse side has just, has just really, um, bumped up a lot. It's about fifty thousand more than what we budgeted, even with the, the increase in the fee. Uh, so this is basically, uh, the comparison of the estimate to what we're proposing for next year. The reason it's, it's about the same is because we anticipate that refuse going down slightly as we approach build out, uh, which is kind of offset by the electricity. Those are about the same. And then just small increases in, uh, gas and cable. Telecommunications has been decreasing slightly as people, you know, mo- most people aren't using landlines anymore. Uh, licenses and permits, you can see this one is, uh, steadily decreasing, and this does include, um, anticipated revenue from, uh, any new development at PD thirty, uh, which is included in the FY seventeen proposed, and, and those two, uh, planning years out, going out in, uh, eighteen and nineteen, and then we kinda taper off, uh, for, um, you know, two thousand twenty going forward. And this is a detail of what, what makes up licenses and, licenses and permits. Uh, we anticipate being a little bit over budget this year. Building permits have been up compared to what we budgeted. Um, going forward, uh, you can see that we're, we're gonna taper off and taper off for a couple of years until we, uh, reach a steady point, which will be basically remodels, fence permits, pool permits, those types of things. Uh, charges for service, this consists of EMS runs, this consists of our contribution from NISD, those are the two main components of this. Fairly steady, uh, we don't predict anything major happening here going forward. Uh, fines and fees by year, uh, you can see this has declined, uh, over the last few years. The primary reason for that has been developer fees. We're really not getting any, any developer fees anymore. Uh, last year, we got about a hundred and thirty thousand in developer fees. This year, we've got zero so far. So, um, you know, we're, we're budgeting about five thousand for developer fees going forward. A large decrease as part of this has been, um, from the estimate to the budget for two thousand sixteen has been related to the change in the, uh, uh, town pool. So we've estimated that that, uh, revenue, all in for, for fees, for rentals, for concessions, everything is about eighty-five thousand dollars, and then offset by about fifteen thousand dollars worth of savings, um, for, uh, lifeguard personnel. And then going forward, we, we don't anticipate, you know, any, any real changes from, from those things that, that make up that. Uh, miscellaneous revenue, um, there was a large spike in two thousand thirteen related to some insurance proceeds. Uh, the current year, two thousand sixteen, included a very large anticipated payment from Sprint, which is a lease that, that the council approved tonight, which, uh, will give us a hundred and sixty-nine or hundred and seventy thousand dollar lump sum payment. And then payments going forward, um, which will be around fourteen thousand dollars a year, and then go up fifteen percent every five years. Uh, we have another, uh, another lease that is, uh, gonna be, um, west of Trophy Club Drive. That, uh, was one that, uh, you have already approved, and that one's gonna be twelve thousand dollars a year. And, um, I have Verizon working on another one that's gonna be, uh, for the water tower, which will be thirty thousand dollars a year. So we, um, you know, even though we're getting a lump sum this year, it goes down a little bit, but it's still gonna be higher than, than prior years, uh, really related to that. And then, uh, based on action the council's taken for the, um, for the fees related to, uh, baseball tournaments, we anticipate that going up fairly substantially as well. And then investment revenue, you can see, uh, we were basically getting nothing, um, you know, from two thousand twelve up until last year. And, uh, this year, we, we anticipate getting, uh, about twenty-six thousand, uh, next year going forward. Um, it'll be about twelve months before we're, we're fully, um, in line with what I'm trying to do with a, um, uh, basically a, a stacking of CDs, which, uh, will be two-year maturities, and they'll, so that'll be the maximum rate that we can get with two-year maturities, uh, ladder together, so. And, and then with the, uh, the Fed has, has, uh, you know, raised the interest rate once, and we would anticipate that happening, um, you know, a few more times over the course of the next few years, which would, would impact that as well. And this is a, just basically a pie chart that shows the percentage that each revenue, um, makes up of the total general fund revenue. So less than sixty-five percent, um, comes from property tax. Um, license and, licenses and permits, which used to be our number two, uh, revenue source, has now dropped down to number four. Franchise fees are number two, and sales tax is, uh, number three. And we would anticipate in the next couple of years, sales tax getting up there to number two. And this is, this is a, a, something fairly similar, but going over multiple, uh, years, you can just see the revenue that is, the, the change in the revenue from two thousand twelve up until what we're planning on it being in, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And then this is just a detail of, of what we've, uh, what we've shown you, and then going out in the planning years, you can see those numbers, and, um, how that makes up the overall estimated, um, revenue going forward. So any questions over, over any of the revenue sources, or any other items?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Does anybody have questions first? Uh, I, I made a, a, a comment to both the Stevens. It turned out it was separately made, as opposed to when they were together. And it was based on our discussion about the effect on our tax rate, if in fact, uh, the town did acquire the assets of the fire department, and how we dealt with that, and how it would affect our tax rate. And so my suggestion was, uh, that staff try to plan in a fashion that, uh, we could absorb the majority of that increase without increasing our taxes. Now, that's gonna be challenging to get seven cents, uh, out of that. But counting on the fact that, as opposed to trying to use all of the increase that's coming from either appraised value going up, or new homes being added, uh, uh, that we, that we try to look at that really hard if we're gonna do that. No matter how we try to sell that idea, it's gonna be hard for people to look at. Uh, it would be nice if that could come out as a net zero for our people, but I'm just giving them the challenge to present us things that says, here's how you're gonna try to do that, if in fact that comes forward. So just letting you know that I've challenged them a little bit. Y'all don't want that challenge, do you?
If we can challenge to, way to absorb seven point two cents, let's challenge to lower. If we can challenge to, way to absorb seven point two cents, let's challenge to lower things by seven point two cents. And then if, then if we get the fire department great, if not, we've found seven point two cents. I mean, I, I would, I would hope that it doesn't take an action like that to, I, I, I think, I feel like we've gone, we've approached each budget year with a, with an eye towards making, not leaving, not leaving cuts on the table that were reasonable, so.
I think the biggest factor there is a capital budget and what it's gonna take for us to, to deal with that capital budget. And so, in, in one sense, saying you may be choosing to delay some capital projects in order to not have to raise taxes enough to do that and you maybe spread that over a period of time. And so, I know from my standpoint, I wasn't prepared to issue whatever debt it was gonna take to redo the, the bridge over Marshall Branch or whatever that piece of water is and raise the road X feet. That was a huge project and so I wasn't ready to spend that money anyway, and if I can put that off, then I have money to maybe absorb this issue. So, I know it's a challenge, they didn't walk away when I said it, but, so.
I would, I would, I would be leery of pushing off capital improvements. I mean, we've got an infrastructure that's, I don't know if failing's the right word, but we've got some streets that need some work in town. Rapidly aging is probably.
But if you remember what that particular project.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm.
That particular project, I'm going.
Yeah, I'm talking about on the whole.
You put that off in future years, it, it may be a, so anyway, I understand.
There's a couple of challenges for next year in particular. And one is that when, when we did the forecast for last year, we had put five hundred thousand dollars coming from the general fund to help fund the, you know, some items for the building. So, whether it's furniture and the AV portion, so that's still in there. Now, we're gonna tweak that number based on, now that we actually have a firmer grasp of what the number is, I think that'll go down. Now, how much it goes down, I, I haven't examined that yet, but we'll, you know, we'll present that, you know, at the next meeting when we do the, the expenditure side. And, and for not just, you know, street replacement and other things, but for capital replacement and those types of things and just capital purchases, this is the most aggressive, it's gonna, I think you'll see it's the most aggressive budget by far that, that's gonna be proposed. And that's, you know, some of it's related to, you know, the full comprehensive, you know, look at the parks and, and things that they need to be replaced and, and added and things like that. And then all the streets and then, you know, you tack on just the regular equipment replacement onto that and then you add the portion for the building. And now you're, you're looking at very large, you know, a million dollars or something in that range coming from the general fund to fund capital for next year. So, it's, now, that's almost seven cents, so.
It is. All right. Any other questions about the presentation? Thank you, Stephen, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, too.
All right, item twenty-one. Provide direction to staff regarding town council future agenda item. Number four, discussion and action related to town garage slash special slash estate moving sales, et cetera. It's an item I placed some time ago on the agenda. The purpose here is, do you still want staff to consider dealing with that? If so, then it stays, but it allows us to have some discussion about it. I placed it there because I felt like the, twice a year garage sale that the women's club uses as a fundraiser is a good thing. I, I like the fact that it happens, I know it is a lot of traffic for a short period of time. But I think we need a way to deal with those special or state sales, moving sales, at least allowing for that in some fashion. I've talked to other cities about that that do require a permit for that and they have a limit placed on how often you can do it. So, it does say you gotta have some kind of database and tracking if you're gonna not, if you're gonna keep people from doing it every month and coming in and getting a permit each time. Anybody against considering, can, keeping this on the list?
I would support keeping it on the list, actually.
All right. All right. Item twenty-two, items for future agenda to include discussions of agenda items for consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen meeting and discussion of future agenda items to include discussion of the below items from our future agenda list. So, we have A, B, C, D, E, and F for different item numbers. Greg, did you have a comment?
No, I was gonna add something, but we.
You're gonna add something to the future agenda list?
Yeah, well, let's have a discussion first. I think over the weekend with the two fires, a lot of residents have been questioning radiant barrier, gas lines in the attic, lightning resistors. Should we put something on there to have some type of discussion or?
I, I, I think it's worth adding an item. I sent an article to the fire chief today about a study that has shown some issues, at least with how some of the construction's happening. And they haven't finished their investigation of the two fires, but in, in some cases, the fire spread faster because of the way things are constructed. And so, he's gonna look at that. Again, lightning comes to wherever it's gonna come, it's gonna seek the highest point.
But there's also some issues about the radiant barrier. Do they attract?
But, but don't we have building standards?
We do have building standards that deal with that. Radiant barriers allowed in that, there's a form of radiant barrier that potentially is worse. Whether or not we allow that, I don't know.
Why are we discussing it, I guess is the question.
What do we hope to accomplish?
We're not necessarily, other than Greg brought it up.
I was asking Greg, I mean.
I mean, you just wanna ignore what residents have a concern about, I mean, that's, that's the way I look at it.
Tim?
So, I've had, you know, I live down in that area and I've had a lot of residents say, we have more lightning than anywhere else on earth in the last five years. I mean, that's what they're saying. So, I did talk to a couple of people that says there are some neighborhoods that have, I guess you'd call them community lightning rods, like giant, you know, lightning structures, attracting structures or whatever. And I, I think it's worth at least exploring and seeing if that's done, how much that cost is. It's worth, I, I think it's worth looking at, just so we can bring back to the people down there and say.
Is, is gas lines in the attic an, an issue going forward? Doesn't mean we should just continue the old way, maybe we, we need to, to look at it. I mean, there's just, there's so many things that have been brought up, I'm not saying any of them are right.
Yeah, yeah. There, there is an issue with gas lines in the attic that they had to be bonded a different way. It happened about ten years ago and the code is moving forward and changing those. The houses that are built, that are built in the Highlands are under that new way of doing things. And so, that, that flexible gas line that, that there was some issues with, they weren't bonded. They, they increased the bonding capacity of them, that's been underway for a long time. Retrofitting them or anything like that, there's, there's nothing that I know that we could do on anything like that. The only thing we would do is on remodels and, and houses that, that have to redo their gas lines, we would require them to come up to the new standards. Going out on a, on a limb, you know, as a smaller town and trying to, we really just, my recommendation would be to follow the codes as they are and keep them updated and if there's any amendments that need to be made, we'll certainly bring them forward to you. But that's, that's kind of the way that operates.
Because I have it in my attic and it's probably, my house is fifteen years old, so it's probably the old style. I mean, just bring citizens in, let, let them have a conversation. Is there a way of doing a shut-off valve? If we, if we see thunder and lightning coming, you're just boom.
I talked to Lasky the other day, Jim, you did as well, and he didn't seem to have, I mean, it was these flexible valves a couple of ten years back, Lasky was saying that they were popping off and breaking and spraying gas, but I guess they fixed that in the code now.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything to do with these fires now.
Yeah, because it ignited quicker.
I don't think that.
At this point, they haven't found that, that it caused it to spread faster or related to that, so.
I will say, you know, having talked to the mix who are on Edinburgh, they're neighbors of mine, friends. At first, the, the fire spread slowly in the attic. They, they were able to get up there and try to put it out with the fire extinguisher, but because it was far enough away, they couldn't really get to it, get to it. So, by the time they could get close enough to it, it had spread too much. So, it wasn't like the gas hit and it just went through, through the, the building that fast.
I would caution that if we're gonna look at having an agenda item on this, that we ensure that we have substantive points from professional subject matter experts that drive and constrain the discussion. Because otherwise, it's a road I'm not going down.
I think from my perspective, I would rather see if we couldn't have a sponsor, a town hall type meeting that citizens could come and we could have experts there to at least allow some discussion. Now, there's some risk of that, by doing that, it, it turns into why hadn't we stopped this or that kind of thing. But.
Yeah.
But I think it's the codes that protect us, it's the investigation that needs to be done. Obviously, we're, they're still investigating those two fires. There, there were some issues with the fact of, I, I hate to use the word perfect storm because it perfect means good maybe, but it was the worst scenario where they happened so fast and the way we were trying to get aid was extremely difficult. And Lasky has a bunch of issues that we're gonna try to address over a period of time to deal with some of that. It was one of those things that they happened so fast and they were spreading so fast, that was an issue. For me, the biggest issue isn't a topic here for discussion. It was citizens who decide they wanna come down with their phone and video the entire fire.
Yeah.
While the fire, the, the firemen are trying to work and rest and get out of the way.
Yeah, times have changed. I, I will say, you know, I, I think a lot of us on the council are into personal responsibility. My wife already had a lightning rod specialist at the house today. Seriously, I'm not exaggerating. I mean, we have a quote already and we have big trees behind us. But, but there are quite a few residents in the pit who'll be, and I, I, my personal opinion is because we don't have any high trees down there, right? That's, it's all the roof lines, so. But I don't know if it should be an agenda item or not, but if there is, you know, something to look at, you know, are these cell towers, you know, worth putting in and saying they'll stop lightning if they're high enough? Or is there a way to look to see what's done in other communities that do this? I gotta have to imagine all these towns that come out and wipe away all the trees and just put in new, new, you know, developments must have similar issues. You know, I'm not saying that we should be the ones to go and do it, but if we're, if we're gonna do anything, I think that's what we should be looking at because that's what the people are asking. Is it something that could stop, help everybody as opposed to just a couple of people?
I don't mind putting on there, I just, I agree with Riley, I think we need to caution as to where that discussion goes. And, I mean, lightning's gonna strike Trophy Club, I agree. I mean, I think it was ninety-two or ninety-three, the house at Indian Creek and Green Hill Trail, the three-story house right there on the corner. I remember walking down there in my shorts, pouring down rain, watching that house almost burn to the ground because it got hit by lightning. I mean, so this has been going on for as long as Trophy Club's been here. So, I don't wanna give people the illusion that we might be able to fix that problem because I don't know if we can fix force majeure.
Yeah, and I, I agree that, you know, and I, I don't think it's our problem to fix, so to speak. I think it's, it's, but I would like to know, and I don't know if, if, if we are actually getting more strikes in a certain area than everywhere else. Not that it should even be done by the town, but that's what everybody seems to think is right, that we're, that we're in lightning alley all of a sudden down there, you know, so.
We might be.
Just my opinion.
All right, there, there is some other research that's going on that I was able to find that there's some suspicion that iron content of the soil makes it more susceptible to lightning strikes. Again, you can get all this information, but you don't know how factual this stuff is. It's, it's, somebody writes a paper and puts it on the internet, next thing you know, everybody in the world thinks it's right.
I have a great quote by my dad about that, but it includes cussing, so I can't share it.
Well, we appreciate the quote.
Again, what.
Doesn't bother me.
What do we hope to accomplish by the agenda item? You know, I don't, I mean.
I throw it out there, I didn't, first I didn't say by gen, just do we wanna discuss this, whether it be a town hall?
All right.
What are we discussing, though, is what?
I think people have concerns and maybe they come in and say, well, what can we do to offset if there is a problem? If I have an older house and the gases upstairs, do we have to change some type of piping? Can we do?
I think what we're hearing, that, that code covers those things as best they can. I, I'm not necessarily in favor of putting it on future agenda at this point, so. So, anybody else wanna support that item? All right, so let's not add that item then. Sorry, Greg?
No, that's okay, people ask me and we get turned on. On a lonely island on this one, no big deal.
You blame it on us.
That's right.
Holly, need to make sure that on the June twenty-eighth council agenda, that we have an item that allows for action and discussion related to the town offer to take over mud debt on the building and the ladder truck and purchase of assets. So, need to make sure that's on that agenda. We don't know what the mud will decide, but the twenty-eighth, which is part of what you have listed there of items. And I don't know if that has anything to do with how we deal with some bids, which you're saying the next week is an issue that people need to get started on some things, so. So, it, it might be nice to, to be as prepared as we can if we can deal with it. Now, obviously, if everything gets approved and it, and move forward, then it's, at least the building starts going, but, but we still need to deal with this issue of the offer. Call your attention to page three forty-five. The purpose of listing under item twenty-two on the council, item number one, two, three, five, nine, and ten, is do you still want them on the future agenda list? They, they've been there for a while. If, if you say remove them, we, and we get consensus on that, we remove them, otherwise, we'll leave them. So, does anybody have any problems with the ones that are there? The, the only, I have a different one that I'm gonna ask a question about, but anybody have a problem with what's on the future agenda list, item one, two, three, five, nine, or ten? All right, so we will leave them. Do you know what those are, do you, do I need to read that, are you okay?
These are the ones listed here.
So, so one is signage and medians and that, that's partly coming to us as a proposal.
Correct.
Item number two was review ordinances regarding townhomes, condos, apartments. Item three, discussion of possible use of hotel occupancy tax. And maybe we're, we're beginning to use that, maybe we can remove that one.
Well, with, with the parking lot and the Veterans Memorial, you're gonna basically use all of the available funds for those two projects.
All right, so why don't we remove item number three from the future agenda list, which is listed as twenty-two C? Anybody object to that? All right. Item five, establish a reserve policy for Trophy Club Park. Obviously, we once again have a wet year and we won't have any money to put in reserve.
But that's not the, it's a reserved policy, it has nothing to do with whether it rains or it's dry. It's just a policy.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I've thought about this one and it's, it's pretty simple. What, what we'll bring, we'll basically say we wanna have, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days of operating reserves. Unfortunately, we'll be out of policy for about ten years, so.
Might as well put it in place, so.
Yeah.
All right, and then item number nine, discussion of green ribbon grants for the beautification along the sound wall of one fourteen. That sound wall is gonna happen at some point. And then, if you're gonna deal with some shrubbery on the highway side of that sound wall, you're gonna need to deal with that as a grant application. And item ten, explore regulations and guidelines to allow golf cart use and parking in town parks. That's being worked on now, I believe, but, but do we also have to deal with some regulations or ordinances?
Yeah, well, we, we, we will have to bring the ordinance back and we anticipate bringing that back at least by the July twelfth meeting, so that could be eliminated.
So, it'll stay there until we deal with that. So, the item that I wanted to call everybody's attention is item number eight on the future agenda list. Discussion of interlocal agreement with TC Mud One for fire services and building services such as trash, drainage, et cetera. Did we, did Stephen and Jennifer solve the problem with how we bill for trash and drainage and that kind of thing?
I don't believe they, they have solved the problem. I actually spoke to Jennifer today and she, she mentioned this, this agreement and they're changing some things in their software that need to be updated, that we're basically applying their deposits to our trash and drainage, so. So, you know, I, I don't, she's very open to it. I don't see an issue with that going forward, at least for what we're billing for them and what they're billing for us. Maybe some of those other items such as the, the mowing of various places and some of the things they're doing for some of our properties in the pit is related to grinder pump and, and things like that. I don't know exactly where they stand on those, but I, I don't see an issue with the billing.
Last update I had was there seemed to be some verbal agreement. Solve that problem, it hadn't been thought of, and so I just was gonna make sure we didn't drop it. Okay, anything that you wanna add to future agenda list?
You wanna leave thirteen? I mean, we've made our presentation.
Yeah, we could probably strike that. What do you think, Reed? It's your item. Is your item?
Yeah, that's fine. So, remove thirteen for now and we'll see where it goes. All right. It is nine fifty-one. And I'll read the following about executive session and we will go into our executive session. Item twenty-three.
Eight fifty-one.
I'm sorry?
Eight fifty-one.
Oh, eight fifty-one. Boy, I said that wrong. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Lamont.
He did his job. Mayor Pro Tim, did his job.
Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code annotated five fifty-one, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section five fifty-one, point oh seven-four, personnel matters to discurs, discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline of dis, or dismissal of a public employee or employ, officer or employee, the Building Standards Commission. So, we are in, take a break, five-minute break or so unless it be an executive session. Eight fifty-one, golly gee, that was off an hour. We will reconvene into regular session. It is nine eleven P M. Council, I'm gonna take you back to item number seventeen. And item seventeen is consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution to make appointments to the Building Standards Commission and designate a person to serve as chair and providing an effective date. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash sixteen, making annual appointments to serve on the Building Standards Commission. Let me get the names here. Designating the following regular members, Peter Blanchard, Sean Cannon, Mark Hamel, John Murtaugh, and Jeff Sims. Alternate Jack Ormond. And naming Peter Blanchard as chair effective June fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
Can I have a second?
Can I just ask for clarification? There's three with terms that expire in twenty sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
And then two in twenty seventeen.
I apologize, I forgot that we had, we had to cover that as well. So, for the three, three in twenty eighteen, correct?
Twenty sixteen.
Or twenty sixteen?
Two in twenty seventeen.
Or twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, according, on?
I can switch those if y'all prefer.
Page three thirty-five, if you look at three thirty-five of the packet.
Thank you for the correction, yes, you're right.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll restate, I'll just restate the motion if that'll help. Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash sixteen, making annual appointments to serve on the Building Standards Commission, designating the following members to serve terms expiring in twenty eighteen. Mark Hamel, John Murtaugh, and Jeff Sims. Designating the following members to serve terms expiring in twenty seventeen, Sean Cannon and Peter Blanchard. And naming Jack Ormond to a term as an alternate to expire in twenty eighteen. Designating Peter Blanchard as the chair effective June fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you so much. Thank you for correcting.
Do you have a second for that? All right. Councilmember Rowe has made a motion, forming the Building Standards Commission. It's second about Councilmember Perro, any further discussion? I would like to say that we had really good applicants, lots of unique skills and diverse skills. So, it, it was really, really a great thing to see people wanting to get involved. Many of them were, were young, younger residents in the sense that they hadn't been here as long and they do, they wanted to plug in and they wanted to plug in with their skill sets, so that was really a great thing. Any other discussion? All, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. It is approved. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All right. Councilmember Perro moved, Councilmember Kurt seconded. All in favor, show your hands. Unanimous, we adjourn. At nine fourteen.